Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. This is Springfield's school board meeting for Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024. Mr. Adams?
Mr. Mason?
Here.
Mrs. Frola?
Here.
Ms. Terry?
Here.
Mr. Furlong?
Here.
Mr. Hofer?
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, our first item of business is the Springfield High School and Junior High Students of the Month. Mrs. Warner?
Good evening. So, the National Honor Society asked the teachers in the dis- not in the district, but in the building to nominate high school and junior high students for Student of the Month. When the information goes to the NHS students, it is without the student's name on it because the NHS students are the ones that choose the students. And we'll start with our high school student first. Leanna, will you come up here? Leanna's our high school student. She was nominated by Mrs. Kreitz, and this is what Mrs. Kreitz has to say. "I have only had Leanna a few weeks in class, but I have witnessed her kindness firsthand. I have a student that has missed a lot and was falling behind, and Leanna talked to her, talked her into sitting with her and helped her get caught up. This is a student that can be difficult at times, and Leanna talked with her and treated her like a friend, and I was so grateful," nominated by Mrs. Kreitz. Congratulations. So, in addition to being recognized here, this is placed in a prominent place as you enter the building for a month, and then this is moved to near the community room and is displayed for the entire school year. Congratulations, Leanna. Our junior high student is Taylor Hannah, will you come up? Taylor is nominated by Mrs. Mitchell, and this is what she writes. "Taylor Hannah is a seventh grade student. She has a super positive attitude and always has a good, loving smile to start the day for everyone she meets. In class, she's always willing to help out the teacher or a classmate, again with a smile. She's a runner across ten forty where she consistently improves her time. She keeps up with her schoolwork and very responsibly turns it in on time. Her sunny disposition, athletic ability, and sense of responsibility make Taylor an amazing student." Congratulations.
Congratulations, ladies and gentlemen. That is a real honor. And our next is the Portage Lakes Springfield Student of the Month.
Congratulations, both of you. Very good. Shiny Yang is the PLCC Student of the Month. Dave and I get the privilege to serve on that board, too. Some great notes that were shared from Mrs. Hartman. "Shiny was an editor in my yearbook class. She always turns in quality work and helps out her classmates. Her graphic design skills show through her with her artistry. Anyone who has Shiny in their program is lucky to have her." And from Mrs. Applegarth, "Shiny Yang is a conscientious, innovative, and bright student who challenges classmates to be their very best due to her example." So, congratulations to Shiny, even though you're not here.
Congratulations. Excuse me. Board members informal. Who would like to start? Parker?
I'll start. Um, I have no comments here on my end. I see a lot of great supporters here today from band and sports boosters, and soccer really showed up last night, so I appreciate all that you guys do for those programs, and it's always good to see more faces here, too. So, thanks for coming.
As last Thursday, as legislative liaison, we have an election coming up, and I gave the story, a line of The Last Crusade, where Harrison Ford goes to look for the Holy Grail and drink from the water and have life everlasting, make a wise choice. The old knight that's there, the first person that takes- picks the goblet up and takes a drink, and after the reaction happens, the knight goes, "You have chosen unwisely." And then when Harrison Ford picks the goblet, takes the drink, and says, "You have chosen wisely." I say that to say this, there's a lot of material out there that people need to read. We have an upcoming election that's very important. Do your research, and thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. That's really all I have tonight.
So, I just want to, excuse me. I want to congratulate the students on getting, having one quarter down, the parents and the teachers, one quarter down, three to go. And I know that they're going to be good quarters. So, congratulations to, and thank you for all the hard work that went into that, particularly the first quarter of the year. That's always, that's always a pressure point for the students, parents, and the teachers, so. At this time, it is recommended that the board go into executive session to consider the discipline of a student and to consider the sale of property at competitive bidding.
So moved.
Second.
It's moved in second.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Terry? Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
We have a motion to come out of the executive session. All right, it's been moved in second. Excuse me, that the board will terminate executive session. Mr. Adams?
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes. Right, motion passed. Number eight is approval of minutes. It is recommended that the board approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 17th, 2024, and those were provided in the agenda, or in our attachments.
I'll second.
It's moved in second. Mr. Adams?
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes. Motion passed. Citizens' comments are our next item. Citizens' comments on agenda items are welcomed at this time. Participants shall be limited to five minutes duration each. And if you're going to have citizens' comments, please remember to say your name and address. Are there any citizens' comments? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to payment of bills. It is recommended that the board approve payment of bills for the month of September pending audit.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Mr. Adams?
Yeah, Mr. Hofer brought to my attention that we had a quite large bill that was over $200,000. That was in normal payment of bills, and it was also in now, then and now part. We didn't pay it twice, okay? But the auditors, if you do not have a purchase order that the date is before the invoice, and it happens rarely on the, that we have to put it on the board agenda stating that we have a then and now certificate that I sign, they get really wonky if we don't do this. So, we do it, and usually it's a small PO, but this one was a quite large one, so. Good catch.
Thank you.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes. Number 11, payments of bills, then and now. It is recommended that the board approve a resolution for payments of bills per Ohio Revised Code Section 5705.41.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Mr. Adams?
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Okay, motion passed. Number 12 is acceptance of financial reports. It is recommended that the board accept the financial reports from the treasurer for September 2024, and these were contained in Exhibits 4, 5, and 6, available for the board to study.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Mr. Adams?
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Pass. And moving on to personnel. It is recommended that the board accept or approve and approve the following personnel items. 13.1 is a retirement resignation. Accept the retirement resignation of teacher Eldon Tom Anderson effective November 1st, 2024. 13.2 resignation. Accept the resignation of classified employee Katie Gantz effective September 13th, 2024. Katie will remain on the classified substitute list. 13.3, employ the following as listed on your agenda, the following classified substitutes per the negotiated agreement, pending proper licensure and pre-employment screening effective the first day assigned. And again, those are listed for you. 13.4, employ the following classified employees per the negotiated agreement, pending proper licensure and pre-employment screening. And that there is a list, a long list on the agenda available. 13.5, employment. Reassign the following classified employees per the negotiated agreement, pending proper licensure. And the employees to be reassigned are listed on the agenda. 13.6, non-sport supplemental contract. And this is one that the band boosters funds. It is not funded by the school. Approve the following non-sport supplemental contract for the '24-'25 school year per the negotiated agreement, pending proper licensure, and it is paid once funds are received in full from the band boosters. And that is a summer percussion instructor, Joey Morrison. 13.7, athletic supplemental contracts. And we're heading into our winter season now. So, listed below, the athletic supplemental contracts for 2024 school year per the negotiated agreement, pending proper licensure and pre-employment screening. And the people are listed as well as the supplemental salaries. 13.8, unpaid leave of absence. Approve an unpaid leave of absence extension through the end of the '24-'25 school year for certified employee Julia Repaski. 13.9, unpaid leave of absence. Approve an unpaid leave of absence extension through December 31st, 2024 for the classified employee Tara Pritchard. And 13.10, accept the resignation of classified employee Phyllis Miller effective end of the workday on October 4th, 2024. So, we'll have a motion on those employments.
So moved.
Second.
Just a couple things. Tom Anderson, who started teaching at Springfield in 1995. In 1995-96 school year, he was a second grade teacher at Lake Moore Elementary, where he remained until he moved to Roosevelt Elementary in 2008, 2009, and then to Spring Hill in 2014, 2015, all as a second grade teacher. In 2022-23, he moved to Schrop, and he became a fourth grade teaching, a fourth grade teacher until his retirement. So, Tom touched a lot of kids, and he will be missed. And we wish him well in his next phase of life. Oh, and then one other thing. Employment Rebecca Tepes. She is now going to be our new Schrop cafeteria manager. So, we're wishing her a lot of luck.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the second phase of personnel. 14. 14.1, we have volunteer coaches. Approve the listed volunteer coaches for the '24-'25 school year, pending proper licensure and pre-employment screening. And again, those coaches who are volunteering for us are listed.
So moved.
And second.
Mr. Adams, it's been moved in second.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Okay, motion passed. I'm going to interrupt here because I forgot to do this during my board comments. I saw that, and she was here teaching when I first came to the district. Wanda Clark was our language teacher. She taught Span- I think she taught four different languages. And I saw that she passed away recently, and I did want to mention that because she, like the other teachers who have been here, touched a lot of lives, and... Thank you. All right. 15, inventory disposal. It is recommended that the board approve the disposal of a 1990 Bluebird bus and a 1997 Chevy Box van from the district's inventory.
So moved.
Second.
Who motioned?
These were just determined to be no longer safe to be used, so.
The Band Bus saw, that Bluebird bus saw a lot of Band, didn't it?
From 1990, that's quite a long time for it to be-
Thirty-four years.
Used, yes. That was the old Band Bus.
Does anyone want to buy it?
Does anybody want to buy it? They could be a really good deal.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Excuse me, 16. It is recommended that the board approve the following resolutions awarding and approving bids and contracts to the Advanced Industrial Roofing Incorporated for roofing improvements, and those contracts, resolutions are listed, were provided in Exhibits 7 and 8.
So moved.
I have to turn the page. Sorry. Just for clarification, the Springfield administration and preschool center needs a new roof, as well as the Springfield maintenance garage. Okay, now Mr.-
So moved.
Now you also.
Second.
Just so you know that we, are these two buildings, back in 2022, we did a diagnostic survey of which buildings had in the need of the most roofing, and these two definitely came out to be the top priorities. While we have other ones going on, we'll be, you know, fixing those, and then as it goes out, we will be replacing unless we get a new building.
Mr. Adams?
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes. Motion passed. And now the fun begins. 17.1, SHS softball team. It is recommended that the board approve an overnight slash extended trip for the Springfield softball team and chaperones to travel to Myrtle Beach, South Carolina to play softball and team build from March 22nd, 2025 through March 29th, 2025. No school days will be missed, and all the expenses for this trip will be paid through fundraising and by the participants. And the, there is an attachment provided for the paperwork for that event. And 17.2, marching band. It is recommended that the board approve an overnight extended trip for the Springfield High School marching band and chaperones to travel to New York City to perform at the Statue of Liberty from April 10, 2025 through April 12, 2025. There will be two school days will be missed, and all expenses will be paid through fundraising and by the participants. And again, the marching band has provided a, all the paperwork needed for describing this.
So moved.
Second.
So, you know, every year, the softball team goes to Myrtle Beach, right?
The last couple, yes.
The last couple, yes. And it's very worthwhile for our girls.
And they enjoy it, it's a great team bonding experience, and we get a lot of- unfortunately, the last week of March, here in Ohio, it's usually snowing, so we don't get a lot of softball played. Down there, we're guaranteed four to five games, so it starts our season off nicely.
Good. Is there a lot of schools that go down there?
What's that?
Is there a lot of schools that go down there?
Yes, last year, there were 62 teams.
Holy comoly. Wow.
All over the northeast of the country.
Nice. And then marching band, we have the mar- every year, they go on a different trip. Last year, they went to Chicago? Is that where they went last? So, this year, it's New York, and then two years ago, it was Disney. So, I think every year, they like to rotate it so everybody gets a chance to go somewhere. So, very proud of our band.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Donations. It is recommended that the board accept the following donations. 18.1, Walmart on Arlington Road donated school supplies valued at $2,000 to the Springfield local school district. 18.2, Pence Brothers Incorporated donated $5,500 from Pence Brothers to the Spring Hill Elementary to help enhance experiences and opportunities for students.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
So, you know, donations is always something that we're very proud and pleased to get. Walmart is, every time I think they clean out their storage back room, they're like, here, give it to Springfield. And Mary gets her little box truck and either goes, picks it up, or they deliver it, and then we divvy it out to our kids. So, they get quite a few supplies. Pence Brothers, I do believe this is the second year in a row that they've done this, donating to Spring Hill to help the kids get different types of experiences. But for those kids that can't pay for some of the different things, this money helps for them also. So, we're very thankful to the Pence Brothers for their donation, and Walmart, so.
Mr. Furlong?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Frola?
Yes. The motion passed. And our next item is the treasurer's report.
I'm going to sit right here. Unless you've been living under the federal rock, two weeks, we don't have to have any more commercials, political commercials on TV. I think we'll all be happy. But on a serious note, this is a pivotal issue for Springfield. I encourage everybody to get up to vote. I think we're going to have a high turnout. I was at the Grand Street today, and it was packed. I mean, all the parking lots are filled up. It's a good sign. People are, that's all we ask, go out and vote. And that's all we ask about these three levies. I'm going to just talk, my talking points are just the facts about what does these three levies mean to us and what they mean to our schools. The renewals, that's the big thing. These are levies that have been voted on for over 24 years in our district, and we've been very fortunate that the taxpayers have approved them. But this time, we're in a unique situation where, I'll just go right, I should just read this before I go off and get in trouble. Basically, these levies will allow our school district to enter into, I call it, a new phase. This phase will allow us to provide opportunities for our students and our staff that we may not currently can do. And that's a wonderful thing. And, you know, I come to work every day, and I get to see the future of our districts. I wish the juniors and seniors had the opportunity that these children may have in the future, but they have their whole life. These are three and four and five-year-olds that I have, I don't want to say fallen loveless, but they, they make me come to work every day. They put a smile on my face. These aides and teachers, they do wonderful things. These are very, very, we have three of these this November, and then next November, we have, we have two. We have a PI fund, and we have another renewal levy. But again, I just want to stress the fact, there is no new money this year, and there won't be any new money for at least five years, based on the current five-year forecast, which is a good thing. So, go vote. Tell your neighbors to go vote. And in two weeks, we can turn our TVs on and not get interrupted every night. Thanks.
And to note that when the renewals pass, we will be released from fiscal oversight, which is something that we are definitely, that's what you just said about not being voted over two weeks. But that's something that we'll be able to do a lot more.
And am I allowed to point out that they are renewals and not replacements?
Yes, you're allowed to say that. They are renewals, they're not replacements. So, it would be no added taxes that's already, because that's a fact.
Yeah.
It's a fact, I could say that. It's a fact.
You've got to be careful to stick with the facts.
It's just the facts, ma'am. It's just the facts.
The reason we're so cautious is there was a law that was put into place a few years ago that doesn't allow the superintendent treasurer to say, "Our kids are worth it, vote yes."
What he just said.
He's just explaining the law.
Okay.
He was explaining the law.
He's just saying what we're not allowed to say.
I'm stating a fact, yes.
And we have to follow.
Sorry, Taylor. We're teaching her wrong. All right. Thank you.
That's good. She wasn't listening, right?
Central office report.
First item I have is just reiterating a notice-
Um, first item I have is just, uh, reiterating a notice that we've sent out, uh, through local papers that the Roosevelt property will be, um, available at public auction. Um, that auction will be held here in this room on November fifteenth, um, at nine AM. Um, that notice is on our website and, um, has gone out through local papers as well. So, uh, that, that will be taking place on November fifteenth. And just an update, um, we finalized the demolition grant where we took that building down. That was one where we paid upfront through our PI fund and then received reimbursement. And we finally received everything back from the land bank and, um, completed that process. So it's been just a few years that it's taken to go through that entire process, but well worth it to, um, to check that box and be able to demo that building. Um, this week is National School Bus Safety Week. We're, you know, the theme this is, um, safety first and safety always. So why we celebrate it this week, it's by far not, um, the only week that we pay attention to school bus safety. We, um, safety is their, you know, the biggest thing there. And some of the items that we did this month were completing our bus evacuation drills. It's always a fun time. I enjoy getting out to see those and, um, going through that process with all the students where we go through all the reiterations of how they safely evacuate the, the buses and so on. So, um, I'm just taking this week to stress, um, the importance of that. And then also along the theme of safety, on October tenth, uh, we completed, that was a non-student day and we had our staff here and quite a few student volunteers, um, came to the high school as well to participate in the safety exercise that we did with, um, our staff and then several area, um, Springfield, Lake Moore, Mogadore, um, I think Coventry, EMS, there were sheriff's deputies there. So we had a number of local departments participated, um, in that drill there. It was a very realistic, um, fast-moving drill, um, there. Went through that. Um, we've been collecting feedback from our staff after that and talking, you know, to our law enforcement and fire, um, partners there about how the drill went. We've received a very good feedback there. Of course, the reason we do these is to learn lessons and find out what we can do better in the future, um, not only to practice what we do well, but we learn from these and ourselves, the police, fire, everybody, you know, has learned a few lessons of how we can improve our response. But overall, I think, you know, the general feedback was, it was a really good experience and we, we've learned some good lessons that we can put into place for the future.
Um, so on October twenty-fourth, which is this Thursday, Ohio Senate Bill Number Twenty-nine, um, goes into effect. It sets guidelines on how our schools and third parties, uh, third-party vendors can collect, store and share student information. Key provisions of this are limiting, include limiting student, you, limiting, I'm having a hard time reading. Limiting the use of personal identifiable student information to educational purposes only, prohibiting the sale of student data to third parties for commercial purposes, requiring parental consent before sharing student data beyond the school or authorized educational services, and establishing data protection protocols including encryption and secure storage practices to safeguard student records. It emphasizes transparency, ensuring the student data will only be used for, used responsibly and securely. And student, uh, schools have to comply with these regulations in order to maintain the data privacy and protect student information. In order to meet the spirit of that law, Springfield local schools will be sending out notifications in the near future regarding what is required from us in order to be in compliance with the law. These will include, um, a list, one of the things that we do, will do is create a list of every, um, third party that we use. It'll be kept on our website, which will link to their data private, their data privacy policies. So that should be, that is actually, is it up? Is it completely up? It's up and we are growing that list as we speak. So that is coming forth.
Um, next week I am heading down to Canton to become a trainer for a crisis prevention program that we've always done in our schools. We previously would use somebody from the ESC, but those folks are no longer employed from the ESC. So this year, when we went to go do that training, we found ourselves without a trainer. So I decided this would be a good opportunity for me and a way for our district to provide this training on a regular basis. So whenever we get a new staff member, we don't have to wait on somebody else to become available to do it. Um, and we can use our inside resources a little bit better to provide the training, um, at convenient times throughout the district. So I'm really excited. It's a three, oh, it's a four-day training, but three days in person and one day virtual. So will be a very interesting experience, but I think it will be good for the district long-term.
And it'll also save us money because we'll have our own trainer in, in-house. Um, you know, in my three years here, two years and months, um, I have received and we have received, uh, many compliments from, in sports, from officials, from our own fans, from fans, from, uh, visiting schools. You know, unfortunately, um, a couple, two weeks ago, it didn't result in any of that. However, this past week, we received a very, very complimentary, um, email that was sent to OHSAA, um, from the refs stating, um, it was an honor and a pleasure to officiate our students, our coaches and our administrators. Uh, it went on to say that our players were respectful and, um, showed incredible sportsmanship. And on top of that, Kevin also received a, uh, phone call from a Norton grandmother who, um, was amazed at one of our students who showed, um, extreme sportsmanship to one of their players. And she goes, you know, even in spite of the score, your team showed class. And so I just want to, you know, thank everyone for their part in making Friday's game, you know, what we expect and what we've always gotten from our students. And, um, it was, uh, it was, um, it's, 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 it's what we've always gotten and it's what we expect. And I was very pleased with that. Very proud, very proud.
Number twenty-two, items worthy of your note. Uh, October twenty-fourth, Schrop conferences are from three-thirty to seven-thirty. November second, marching band turkey festival at, uh, High School Junior High at six o'clock. November second, Springfield Township Women's Club Craft Show at High School Junior High.
And that's from nine to four.
Oh, okay. Let me add that. And that's from nine to four.
Nine to four.
So the turkey festival and the craft show are on the same day?
Yes, it usually was always like that. Last year was the first time that it wasn't.
Yeah. Uh, November seventh, Spring Hill Conferences, three-thirty to seven-thirty. November fourteenth, Spring Hill Conferences, three-thirty to seven-thirty. November nineteenth, next regular board, uh, meeting, uh, will be held here, uh, in this room, this building, beginning at six o'clock. And November twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, Thanksgiving, no school, but good fragrances of, uh, turkey emanating.
Yes.
Everywhere. Uh, December second, conference comp day. There is no school on December second.
And I'd like to add, uh, this Saturday, October twenty-sixth, it's going to be Haunted Schrop and it's going to be from one to three. Um, and then at four o'clock, it's going to be Lake Moore Costume Contest at, um, Methodist Church in Lake Moore. And then I think it's trick or treat at night?
Five to seven.
Five to seven, okay. So we got one to three, four to whatever, and then five to seven. So it's a busy Halloween day. So come see the Haunted Schrop. This is the first time you guys are doing it on a Saturday.
Yeah.
Okay.
I will be there.
Okay. I'm done.
Well, that's okay.
Okay, well, wait, one more, one more thing. So, um, I'm not done. October thirtieth is, uh, the Springfield-Lake Moore Boobash and that's going to be at the Plaza. And that starts at five o'clock and that goes from five to six. So.
Can we send one more?
Oh, go ahead. Oh, yes, yes, go ahead.
The hide and seek.
Oh.
Springfield Police.
Yes, forgot about that. There's going to be a hide and seek with the Springfield Police here on this campus. Um, eighty-six students signed up for it and they're going to use everything from Jet Park all the way over to our, uh, track and everything over there. And the kids are going to hide and the police are going to find them. So that, and then, yes, okay, I think, okay, I think that's it now.
In November is National Dental Month for all the kids that are going to visit after trick or treat.
Yes, there, there, there is a lot of candy being eaten, okay.
Yeah. I was going to say we should do a fundraiser on stomach.
On stomach. I'm, I'm, I'm going to be curious about the hide and seek. That's going to be, uh, uh.
Uh, item twenty-three is, uh, citizens' comments. Participants will be, uh, if any citizen wants to address the board, participants will be limited to five minutes duration. And again, it's, uh, reminding people to give their name and address. Is there anyone who would like to make citizens' comments? Well, it looks like, I don't have anyone, and it looks like we can have a motion to adjourn. And we'll send you home early.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. We adjourn our meeting. Mr. Adams?
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Furlong?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferola?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Hofer?
Yes.
All right.
Meeting is adjourned. And thank you again for.